Welcome to the meeting to order. This is a public hearing. For this express purpose, as stated in the notice, I will read most of it. Eric D. Jones, West 4774, Overland Drive Alphard, Wisconsin, filed suit one to win and apply for a special permit granting limited operations of a seaplane on the waters of Lakeview. And if Jones would like to have the ability to visit friends and to drop off, pick up persons, uh, in states with a thirty-two-year resident preparing order for Lakeview, you'll have compliance with local regulations. Tom Code, Section sixteen point oh five point one eight zero, aircraft parasailing, current states, aircraft shall not plan to take off from any part of the lakes regulated by this chapter, except in the case of emergencies or unless a special permit has been obtained through the town board. I'm not gonna go through, uh, the restrictions and limitations, the applicant will do that. Uh, the applicant has requested the town board hold on the issuance of a temporary special permit for the aircraft, a Piper model PA twelve, here in this registration, and seven six three D K to land, to take off, and taxi upon the waters of Lakeview on a temporary basis, and has stipulated your restrictions and or limitations once you set them up and get us in the after notice of the public hearing. Uh, we're gonna ask that the applicant, uh, explain his request. Uh, I'll also ask that there be representatives from the Department of Transportation here or a, and then, uh, I'll invite, uh, statements for or against, uh, the request. And then the applicant will also have the time to respond to most of the questions that some of you have come to get through. And then we'll turn, uh, was scheduled for one hour, but they already got morning starting, one hour later. Um, and you may limit, uh, two minutes each. So with that, I'll ask the applicant to come up here and talk to me. Mr. Jones.
Hi, good evening, Eric Jones, W forty-seven seventy-four, Overland Drive Alphard. Um, I am a private pilot, been a private pilot for twenty years, had just under two thousand hours of overflying, probably flying my seaplane between four and five hundred, I didn't look when, uh, when I got there. Um, basically what I'm requesting is to be able to, on a limited basis, set times, uh, I had no problem with that, um, and to land and to depart from, uh, Lakeview. Lakeview is a very, uh, it's a big enough lake, it's a pretty big enough lake, uh, to operate those, uh, limited amount of flights. I'm not doing any training, I have not a C F I, don't do any training. Um, I don't do, and it would stipulate, there would be no such thing as, uh, touch and goes. And you understand what a touch and go is, you come in, you land, you take off, and leave. Um, I'm, I'm not doing it to bother anybody, irritate anybody, it's, it's a freedom that, as, as the chairman had mentioned, it's a freedom that of our lakes in the United States, basically. And the town has rights, which they did, we don't know when, I don't think that ever become a sandwich when, but it's been a long time that they've restricted it. Um, I land all the time at Lake Como, I land down in the Fox Lake, and, yeah, I gotta tell you, in on Rock River, and if you think, uh, Lakeview might be busy, those are busy. I'm not, we don't do it as a reckless hobby, we know our lives, you know, I'm, I'm sixty-one, I gotta say sixty-one, that makes me choke, I'm sixty-one years old, but I still have a lot more life to live. Um, the amount of insurance that we have to carry, I, I, I'm not jeopardizing my two hundred thousand dollar airplane, uh, at all, and I'm certainly not gonna jeopardize the liability aspect of that if there's anything that would ever happen on the lake. Because the liability part of it is much bigger than just my little airplane, or myself for that matter. Um, people worry sometimes, they think, oh my gosh, an airplane, this huge thing comes in like a seven forty-seven, doesn't work that way. Our airplane comes in, I, I land going, well, any, what's called indicated straight forty miles an hour, but it's less than forty miles an hour. I land at less than forty miles an hour, I take off at less than forty miles an hour. Um, I, I, there was, there was a comment, people say, oh, there's noise and things like that. Landing, there's no noise because there's no power. The amount of weight is less than any pontoon probably that you'll see on Lakeview. It is less, it's, it, it, the displacement is about six inches, uh, maybe eight inches, about six, eight inches of displacement, there is that. Um, taking off, it is, for about fifteen to twenty seconds, because you have to apply power to get off the water. Once you're off the water, you pull back power and you climb away. Um, I, I have a question in northern Wisconsin, I never take off out of there before nine A M., nor when I land there before nine A M. Because if you've ever been on a quiet lake, and you can scream across the lake, probably hear people on the other side. So, out of respect, you just don't do that, you just do it before ten. Oh, before ten, well, see, that's even better yet here, it's kind of, fuck, you follow the rules, because people don't want that noise in the mornings especially. Uh, but, you know, they, it's not gonna be like I'm taking friends up and landing back down on Lakeview and taking friends up, that's how it was all about. It's coming in, seeing my friends, maybe picking up one, and leaving, uh, maybe having dinner and leaving. Um, actually, you have dinner, because then it goes beyond the, you know, wait at the night bar time too, so maybe lunch. But, um, I, this, I would imagine what, and, and I flew about seventy-four hours this past twelve months, I landed on Lakeview in Como a total of eight times. And they're wide open, and they are like wide open, and I land there just for practice. My, I like to fly to get wet, I go wet, I go up to north to our cabin, I'll go, uh, down to see friends on Fox River, I'll go over to Madison to see friends, or on Rock River. But I don't just go out and land to land, and I would encourage that, if that's part of it, you want to say there's no touch and goes, and there's no multiple landings at one time, I'm, I'm, I'm for that, I have no problem with that. But it is not a dangerous activity, it is not something where I'm coming in with four hundred boats out on the water. I, I can see, I have great visibility, and I wish somebody would have came with me, and I do have the video, I can pass it on my iPad of me landing on Lake Como, a couple of times, because it's closed unfortunately. Uh, but you have visibility at about two hundred and seventy degrees, I can see, and I'm only going forty-five miles an hour before I hit the water, and then about forty when you hit the water, I got a lot of time. And a lot of time to visualize, to see, to notice where the boats are, to see where the traffic may be, but my goal is not to be there when there's traffic. I don't wanna land where there's a lot of boats, that's not safe for me, it's not safe for the boats, and quite frankly, it's not a lot of fun playing on rough water. Um, it's, it's more of a, um, midweek anything when the job is off, or if it's a, uh, um, before, which we're, I don't know. Like, I went out two, three weeks ago on Lake Geneva, there were two boats on the lake, there were two. Now, it's after Labor Day, right, and probably before Labor Day, there'd be that way, Lake Como, there were boats on both plates. Fishing boats do well, obviously, they're usually not out in the middle, they're usually kind of up to the sides. Um, and then, and they love it, I mean, I've seen, there's people out there waiting in general the time you land, and, and they'll, you know, if you stop and turn around, they'll come over and talk to you. Uh, it's, you can't take a boat and, the props not gonna really hit me, but there's a prop that's behind the pontoons, so I can't run into anybody and hit a prop. Um, it's, 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 it's just something for casual use, not very often, I really encourage to be able to look at it as just a seat. If, if, if it's like, oh my God, this is like cataclysmic, then I understand, but I don't think we should just, you know, there's a different expression, I don't know what you're referring to, but I don't think we should just dismiss something without having really any experience to know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, I'll ask now, uh, is there anyone here from the Department of Transportation, if you're an addict, M A, any? Okay, uh, now invite, uh, anybody to come up, and let's go, uh, who's in first, and then we'll go against, and again, if there's something, if you've gotten down, you're supporting. So, uh, two minutes, coming up, state your name and address, and your.
I'll, I'll be in support. Thanks for doing, uh, my name is John Gritschke, um.
John, please go ahead and speak.
G R I T S C H K E.
Thank you.
And my residence is sixty-two, I'm in Crystal Lake, I'm a thirty-two-year resident, I'll see you out at East Shore. Um, I, I support, because I'm a pilot as well, I fly a lot with Eric, Eric and I, we do dog rescues from Texas, we're gonna do another one, one on my desk, we'll get some puppies from Texas. We, we fly a lot together, and, uh, I enjoy flying his, uh, his, his amphibian, and this just all came up this past, this past summer, because we thought, well, wouldn't it be nice if we could, you know, come in here and use the lake? And, uh, I echo Eric's sentiments that it would never be done at busy times, because it's unsafe for the aircraft. Um, yes, it would be unsafe for the bowlers and swimmers and all that, but the bottom line is, it's unsafe for the aircraft. If that's the case, we're not going in, it's never a have-to-do situation, it's never a have-to land, have-to take off kind of thing. I understand that, uh, I read some of the opposition letters and cannon in the packet, I understand that people are afraid of maybe what they don't understand, but they don't know, it's easier to say than just no, than say yes, so, and I, and I get that. My suggestion is that we look at doing these temporary with remainder of the voyage, which is gonna happen until after the Fox, at this point. Which is fine, that's actually the slowest time of the year, but like, having been up here for thirty-two years, I know that. There will be, moving out, but once the last of the bucket people get picked off, the ice, and the ice comes out, uh, it's pretty hot, uh, so, uh, at least mid, uh, last week of April. So, anyway, I would like to speak in support of it, and, uh, that's everything.
Hi, uh, John, where do you live on your east shore?
Uh, at, uh, uh, gosh, what's the address?
I wanna know the address, left, right, uh, if you're looking at dockside, you go left, you go right.
You're looking at dockside, on the lake, two houses to the right.
Two houses to the left, so I assume this is where the plane will be parked?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, correct, and then, and what's the wingspan of the plane?
Thirty-six.
Okay, so is that kind of, that's neighbors or anything, you go home there?
Hundred seventy-five feet.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
No, it's a great question.
Can I ask, so he said it's not a situation where you have to land, does that mean that you can, and, um, you can, and, um, land?
Yeah, my plane can, all kind of land, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, Eric's plane is what's called an amphibian, so it has pontoons, but it also has wheels.
So you could instead of, to the east right airport?
Yeah, like if John and I were coming up for lunch, or if I was coming in for lunch and it was really, really busy, I would end up either going back to my airport, drive my car around base at Durhamson Airport, and then I would just ride back, I probably wouldn't mind it, be sure we got it on the car there.
Right.
And then it's fifteen minutes driving.
I also base an aircraft part-time at East Shore. Some of you may have seen my red airplane flying over there, it's kind of hard to, that's.
I have a question, uh, either of both of you, uh, been to a lot of people on a lake in the last couple of weeks, and there are a lot of reports of a plane, low plane, blowing the lake, what have they do for the last couple of weeks, do you have, you gonna do it?
No.
I do.
Well, no, it's not me, definitely not me, when I come over to the lake, so, and especially because I'm not an amphibian, I'm not in the water equipped, I'm flying, I can't get below five hundred feet, we were. So when you see me come over on the dockside.
And as far as the, how long it's been that way, uh, I did talk to Bob Miller, uh, probably ago actually, and he said it was, uh, well, over twenty years ago, probably like thirty years ago, and that, he added in there. And I asked him why that was put into the arguments, and, uh, did you quite recall that exactly happened there? At, at that time, the D N R was involved with, the D N R might did at that time say it was unsafe, that was very good.
Do you have that?
Uh, I have quite a knowledge of people, yeah.
Could you get them ready for, because I'd like to read from somewhere, how would I have the D N Rs involved? I don't know, yeah, you came up with that.
Yeah, it's kind of, uh.
Do we wanna keep asking these guys questions, or go to the polls, because I have several other questions, so.
Is the board first, and then, uh, the, uh, the board in favor before the opposition, so maybe that's the question for the.
Yeah, um, I heard you say that you are picking up people, are you providing a taxi service?
No, no, that's not leaving you do, it would be picking up a friend of mine to go, to, which is only John actually, um, and to, uh, maybe we're gonna go back to my airport and then go to get the dogs. But mainly, it's probably just coming over to have lunch, because I can't have dinner because I can't take home, like, probably on a quiet day, or John, John's up quite a bit at the house, uh, so this. The whole thing, Barb, was just a, it's just a social, I mean, it's not, it's not meant to be like an attraction, to get a lot of people, oh, hey, let's, you know, drop you off and take you up, and drop you off and take you up, that's, we're not into that at all. I can say that we don't want to.
That's why I recommend to say, if you wanted restrictions that there could only be, like, one thing on one night of the day kind of thing, that's not a problem.
And an air taxi requires special licensing, which neither of us have, and it requires special, um, paperwork from the F A A to be an air taxi operator in addition.
I understand that, but I also don't know how anything would be verified, I mean, I don't necessarily know that you have nobody in the plane, you have five people in the.
Well, there's only seats two.
Okay.
Well, I guess technically it seats three, but not what I'm wanting.
Um, well, I, I have a few questions, but I, this is for the applicants. So, where would your main area be for takeoff and landing on Lakeview, like? Where would you land, I like, where, what part of the lake would you land, and take off, like, what, and I assume it's right out front dockside is what you're thinking, like, how does this work, I'm not a pilot at all.
It could be, I don't wanna answer for.
You have to come in a certain way because of this wind, or?
You deal with the winds, that's your, that's your first concern of winds, uh, but you, and, and width, uh, length, I should say, length. Um, you know, you're not, you, you don't, if the wind is blowing a certain direction hard, you don't land if there's not enough room to land. So it's mainly gonna be in the main, kind of all the mains of the parts of the lake, so John, if you don't, like, that, it's mainly, it's gonna be in the main section going east.
Well, it's gonna be, more than likely, it's gonna be between dockside and all the way over, like, where the, the home, Minnesota has the, uh, lake. No, 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 I know what you mean, um, that's Farmer's Prince, but.
No, on the lake, I want on the point.
Oh, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, the new, the new, yeah, the point they just re- did with all rocks. Yeah, that, and that's, that's, because that's the large area, but it also could go the other direction, north and south, just depending on the wind, and then, in that case, it would be from, like, Golden Beach Road all the way down toward Farmer's Thames, so. And the amount of space that you would need based on experience flying there is, you know, a quarter of that. So, landing is, uh, eight hundred feet?
Yeah, it's okay, yeah.
Takeoff, group, double.
Your letter says like five, five hundred feet, I was.
Depends on the winds.
Yeah, it all depends on the wind, the better, as we got, the shorter takeoff roll we have, and shorter landing.
And then one, and then once you're landed, you get to John's place, um, and when you're in your taxi mode or idle mode, I believe your email said, uh, around thirty-five miles an hour, that seems very, that seems excessive.
Yeah, I don't, well, that's your, that's what you're about, thirty-five fours when you're taking off. When, when you're taxiing on this particular lake, you're probably always gonna be a pretty close flight pilot, which is two to three miles an hour, just like I was on a pontoon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, because.
If I write an email, it, maybe I misread that.
Or I mistyped it, but no, that's, that's what speed is gonna be after you're gonna take off.
So many other things, I watched some videos today, I can't, it seems like when, when these planes, when you fire them up, you're moving, is that correct? Like, you're, like, there's no way to.
Well, they don't have.
Hold in position, or, so like, when, when that, when that prop is supposed to, you what, you spin this thing around, you're in it, and you, you fire it up and you're going?
Depends on different locations, uh, like up at our, up at our cottage, uh, I, I'll turn the plane around so it snows out into the water, and then I start, and then I go. Some places have a dock where I can actually start it and keep myself right at the dock, with just like a hook, basically, with a rope, or, or I have a friend, John, might be, if I drop the ball and I'm at the top, uh, he would hang on the, uh, the strut of the airplane until it moved. It's, uh, it, when you, when you start the plane up, it's, it's not chugging, that's.
No, no, I understand that, I just, you know, I, I don't fly planes, so I'm trying to.
Yeah, if I can help you, uh, because I think maybe I understand what you're asking, once the engine's running, you, you do have forward tendency, right? It's almost like a pontoon that doesn't have neutral.
Sure.
Uh, or reverse, to be fair, but it doesn't have a lot of pulling power until you apply more throttle to it.
Okay.
Right? Um, because there's no propeller in the water, the propellers in the air, it's real easy to hold it back until power is applied and it over, overpowers that force that's holding it back. Uh, when you, when you chop the power on the seaplane, it slows down very fast because it has a lot of drag in the water, the pontoons are sitting low. Right, it's like a pontoon boat, it's not a, it's, it's actually very.
That was my next question.
Very much so.
You run into a situation, because we, I mean, I have looked at worst-case scenario, right? So you're going out to take this thing up out of the water, and some kid comes through on a jet ski or something, how do you stop, how do you veer away from that, how do you fix that issue?
Well, well, it's really no different than a boat, and having driven all kinds of boats for thirty-two years on the lake and jet skis, uh, it's no different than any of those where it's a matter of avoiding, the problem, first seeing it, second, avoiding it. Um, in, in an airplane, you have one extra choice, which is to get off the water, provided you've got that speed.
Well, it happens pretty.
It just, and, and we are, there's two other things that you do to avoid, number one is power, blow your power, the other thing is, as long as there's wind going across your plane, you have a run.
Yeah.
And, and you steer it, it's like a steering wheel.
Okay, so you can.
Well, not, I can't do this, I can't do it.
No, you cannot, oh.
It's, and I, I suppose I could do that right before they jump, at about forty miles an hour, by the time it's twenty, it's gonna be more gradual to the left, to the right.
Well, because there are, you know.
The whole thing about flying seaplanes, and they teach you those signs, I saw the gentleman that quoted the, the F A A handbook, which we all are given when we learn to fly seaplanes, seaplanes, ski planes, and rotorcraft that have pontoons, right? Um, the whole thing is being aware of your surroundings before you start to take off. There, you don't ever, in an airplane, you don't ever take right away, because it's just not the smart thing to do, you know, like.
And when you're landing, you do what's called a period check.
Yeah.
You don't, I don't come in from Burlington and go past East Shore, I chop my power and land on Lakeview. You do what's called a downwind, I fly down the length of the lake, and I'm checking there to make sure, okay, this looks safe, this looks good today, and by the way, when you're five or six hundred feet off, people on the lake, they'll, they'll see you. And then you come back around, I mean, you're up there probably for two to three minutes before you would make your initial approach.
We're always required to do a survey of the landing area, it's not always for people or boats, a lot of times, like, up north, it's for logs, dead ends.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're trying to make sure that, like, if you're not familiar with it, you want it to be safe.
All right, we're gonna move on here, uh, because there will be more questions.
Sure.
Uh, so if anyone else to speak in favor.
Thank you.
Of this, uh, perfect.
I'd like to, the, the, Mr. Jones, I'd like to speak in favor of the, uh, landing seaplanes on the lake. Um, I've been in the area for quite a while, and I pay attention to what happens on this lake, I pay attention to what happens on, uh, various lakes, like Geneva, Como, things like that. And I really haven't heard of any airplane boat collisions on the lakes in our area here. So I don't think we'd be setting a precedent if we allowed, uh, Mr. Jones to land his plane here on off occasion, um. I think that when you're a pilot, you have a lot of money invested in your training, you have a lot of money invested in your equipment, and in order for you to maintain your equipment and maintain your life, you're gonna be on your game at all times, because pilots don't get too many chances to make a do-over. Uh, generally, if you go on a plane, you're gonna get wrapped up, the bugs are up pretty good. So I think, uh, with the Public Water Trust Act, that affords people access to inland bodies of water, and Mr. Jones's use of this inland body of water is no different than, uh, giving your fishermen, your pontoon people out there, enjoying the lake too. So I'm in support of it.
I'm also in support of, of Mr. Jones, um, same, uh, opinion that John had, I'm sorry, I'll call, I shouldn't breathe in on this. Um, and I think, uh, pilots are probably one of the most responsible people that you can, um, meet, I have a couple other friends that are, uh, personally small craft pilots, and they're extremely, extremely responsible, so I totally support it. If something, just give them a chance, if something happens, you can always pull a permit from somebody, thank you.
I assume when she says something happens, meaning that there would be an incident where somebody's not comfortable on the lake, or that it just was not a proper fit, because we hope, not gonna look, we never had it, it's self-named.
You don't want, you don't want.
Right.
No, of course not.
All right, uh, in support, anyone else?
Jan, Wels two zero seven zero, B Y L I, so, um, I'm glad I came tonight, I, I really, uh, was wondering why we needed to do this. Um, I like the answers that these gentlemen have given, uh, the one part that I wanna say maybe is a bit in favor is possibly maybe, would be, uh, I like the temporary part of, let's try this out early spring, you know, we're, we're not gonna have a lot of bowlers, boomers, you know, uh, people on the lake maybe for a time period. Just my opinion that we're gonna take a shot and see, you know, see how that kind of goes, because, uh, I'm usually in favor of what, what, what's good for the majority, and what's good for, you know, uh, for the whole town, or that they have more of a bigger interest, it seems pretty small, that's why I haven't been, I'm saying yes. Uh, I don't think there are a lot of seaplane captains here in the community, you know, uh, that's my one, you know, reservation on the whole thing, is it's, it's not a big ticket item, so, I mean, having an organ is, it must have been a reason back in, when it was made, and. Maybe a temporary trial basis when the lake is definitely not busy, but summer activities made, that's why I wanted one.
Okay, Ken, I think, anyone else in favor? All right, uh, in opposition, you come up, the green.
Oh, listen, get up there. I can't say that I'm in favor or an opposition at this point, my question, and this is George Rubus in ninety-three fifty-one, who, uh, uh, I'm jealous of Eric, I wish I, I know a little bit about flying, and, uh, I wish I had a seaplane, I wish I could, because, uh, there was a reason thirty years ago, or forty or fifty, or maybe never, seaplanes law to this, on this lake. Uh, you know, we're gonna break that precedent, and this is very problematic, uh, and I understand, and my question really is to the board, is this a temporary permit, a one-time exception, and nobody else is gonna get, use this lake as a, as a seaplane?
That's the request, from what happened.
So, so what, if, what will, if his friends decide that they'd like to also come, and what's gonna happen then, will they go through the same process, the police will have six or eight or a dozen?
They'll be the president, yes.
Yeah, be president, okay. Eric, and, and your take off, from, by the way, my qualifications, I'm an Air Force pilot, I retired after twenty-seven years.
Thank you.
I'm a, a retired Air Force pilot, I've flown corporate jets for twenty years, I have a smaller plane, uh, of my own, and I've gone to the University of Southern California Accident Investigation, uh, and Institute of Accidents Investigation, and, anyhow. So I know a little bit about airplanes, but I know nothing about seaplanes, except that I really like them, and, uh, I wish I had them, but the question is, uh, there's a time during takeoff when you apply power, which is, that's when the noise comes in. And you have the stick or the yoke all the way back, because you wanna get your pontoons, pontoons up out of the water, and get on what they call a step. So at that thirty or forty miles an hour, you get on the step, and you stay there for fifteen seconds, twenty, whatever it takes to get the airspeed where it's required. Because of the drag and the pontoons, it's a lot slower. Because of the drag and pontoons, it's a lot slower, uh, climbing the air ground than, uh, other airplanes. Uh, it's got a lot of drag, the pontoons give a lot, a lot of air drag. So, my question is, how long is it when you have no safe forward visibility? And you're, 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 you're going down the, uh, uh, down, down the runway, by the way, the whole lake is not a runway. There's an innumerable amount of runways, it depends on the winds. The winds here are from the south, southwest, west, northwest, west, or north. That's where the winds are always, very seldom from the east, uh, at all. So, there's a period of time there when you can't have any forward visibility, there's no forward visibility.
All right, I'll stop this one second. You got two minutes for presentation, you're now asking questions, are you asking a question?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I'll ask a question. So, how long is it that you don't have a good forward visibility on the pontoon airplane, on yours?
On, on my particular airplane, I, I actually do have forward visibility in mine, even when, before I get up on step. The, to get up on step takes approximately between probably around a hundred feet before I'm up on step. I have a pretty powerful airplane.
Yeah.
And I can get that on, on, on step. And once I'm on step, I have the same, I'm, I'm, I'm like this, I have full visibility left hand, right.
Yeah.
And so I'm off the water and, and I have to say, my plane will fly between eight hundred and twelve hundred feet a minute.
Yeah, that's pretty good, uh, uh, because a lot of aircraft, it all depends on how high you're hitting the, the pontoon.
Right.
Uh, some aircraft are called hull aircraft, and there's no visibility when you take off.
You're, you're, you're a bolt. Yeah, it's much different.
So, yeah, but so the other thing is, if there should be a problem, if there's an accident or an incident, I guarantee the FAA is gonna be involved if it's an incident. If it's an accident, it's gonna be the NTSB, if it's major bodily damage, major injury or death. It's, and if the airplane sinks, the DNR, the EPA, and the FAA are gonna be interested in the hundred gallon gasoline that's the forty to sixty gallons or whatever it is, that's leaking in the lake. So that's the problems we have. And that's my coupon angle.
Yeah.
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
We had to make quite a, quite a long question, man, we started off less than. Okay, um, anyone else, uh, just in opposition?
My name's John Frandini, I live on, uh, South Carolina, I'm a P D, very selfish. I've flown, uh, out of East Troy International Airport, uh, about ten times, about ten times this past summer, I fly over from there. Um, however, I don't live on the end of the runway, and I don't wanna live on the end of the runway. And, and I just, I'm, I'm opposed to this because I just don't want the aircraft operating from my house. You know, I just don't think it's a good idea, because what's your rate of climb, twelve hundred feet a minute? What, what, at the end of your run, how long does it take you to get to a thousand feet or five hundred feet, I guess, is what you can fly around?
Well, to get to five hundred feet was, um, by the time I'm off the water, it's, it's thirty seconds.
Twenty seconds, yeah.
So, so you're, it's worth less than thirty seconds in my house at forty miles an hour.
Well, once you're off the water, you're going faster and faster.
What, what, what kind of airplane is it?
Oh, P and twelve, hyper, quicker?
Highway, quicker. Um, how many, like, four passenger?
No, it's a, it's, 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 it's a two-passenger, they call it a three-passenger, they have two kids in the back seat.
Yeah. Okay, anyway, I guess. I'm not bothered.
Okay.
That'd be good, thanks.
All right, come on up.
My name's John Russell, uh, my wife and I are lakefront homeowners at N nine one five zero Humphrey Lane in the town of East Troy. Uh, my wife and I, and our three adult children and our grandchildren are all boaters and avid water sports enthusiasts. Lake Geneva is not a lightly trafficked lake in the north woods of Wisconsin, nor a remote fishing lake in central Canada. Lake Geneva is an all-sports lake with its proximity to Chicago and Milwaukee, is very active in the spring, summer, and the fall. I do not see this proposal as benefiting the lakefront homeowners or the town in good. I see it as a public nuisance, a safety risk, a negative impact to property values, and an overall detraction from the quality of the lake environment by a petitioner that is neither a lakefront homeowner or even a resident of the town of East Troy. I implore the members of the town board to not approve this call.
All right, next.
Ted Ergen, nineteen fifty, pastime lane, uh, chair Lake Geneva management district. I don't wanna repeat, uh, anything that anyone else has said, I agree with people who aren't in support of planes landing on the lake. The primary concern I have is with respect to what if the incident happens? We had a lot of things mentioned about who would be involved investigating that kind of incident. I'm much more concerned about people who are going to respond, be responding to that incident. I don't mean to infuse the quality of our safety services, but I don't think East Troy Safety Services are going to have the equipment to safely handle a rescue of a plane, uh, on the lake. It's just, that's not a resource a small town has, I doubt that's a resource any small town has. I know that we have, uh, an airport close by, I think that, uh, would respectfully suggest that they haul a cab from the airport and go to the front self-coverage. It seems like a lot safer environment for all of our services.